Good afternoon, members of the public and board members and district staff. This is a special meeting of the board Friday, January 21st. Let's have the roll call, please.
Director Roberson?
I'm here, but I need to let you know I can go to about 3:10 that I get my grandson from school.
Oh, okay.
Director Anderson?
Here.
Director Malik?
Yeah.
Director Riley?
Here.
Director Edwards?
Here.
Vice Chair Adams?
Here.
Chair Paul?
Here.
Our directors are present.
Let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance now. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of United States of America
And to the Republic For which it stands, one nation Under God, indivisible With liberty and justice for all.
Congratulations to Chair Paul for presiding this year.
Thank you, and I hope that you will guide me in the right direction for the district, and I am happy to work with such good people, both on the board and the staff and council. We're very lucky. And I'd like to wait until the regular meeting that we have coming up very soon to properly thank Chair Edwards for former Chair Edwards for serving as chair last year and doing such a magnificent job. So today, especially since, you know, two of our directors are very short on time, we'll try to go quickly. The purpose of this meeting, as you all know, is to look at our strategic plan, review our goals and objectives that we set for ourselves last year, see what needs to be updated, changed for this, and determine our goals and objectives for this coming year. And we should be able to do that, I think, you know, fairly fairly quickly. Maybe we'll we should be able to do it this afternoon, I should think, but we'll see. So we first have to, we have the action item to adopt, yes.
Yes, so the next header that we have is additions and corrections to the agenda. Follows our public comment, and then we'll get to our action item in the next session.
Thank you, Joel. Are there any additions or corrections?
There are none.
Thank you. So this is the public. Members of the public can address the board at this time on any matters not on today's agenda that are within the jurisdiction of the district. If you're a member of the public that would like to speak to the board now, please raise your hand.
So let me share my screen here. Let's see the timer. Can you see the timer?
Yes. Yes.
At this time, I would like to invite Michael Bear. Michael, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Hello, board. Happy New Year. Congratulations, Director Paul, and thank you so much to Director Edwards for two years of service as the chair and job well done, and I look forward to seeing Director Paul lead us onward in this unusual time we're in. My comment today, I think many of you are aware of Ramp, Ron Weitzman's group. We meet most Mondays. I think of it as a water think tank, you know, people come and go and ideas are shared. And I just want to report on last Monday, this, you know, this week. We had a guest speaker, John Wizard, running for assembly in the newly constructed Assembly District, which now includes San Luis Obispo instead of Santa Cruz. So it's a dramatic change for the Assembly District. And we were talking about a lot of things, and I would recommend him highly. He's very bright and experienced now in with some elected offices, and he is a real asset. So I hope you all will look into him, and I endorse him to be voted for. But he came up with a very interesting idea, which is, we were talking about ASR, and he said, you know, why don't we expand that to, and his suggestion was to include the water that flows out of Lake El Estero, right? Comes down through North Monterey. He says it never floods there after all these big rains, so it must be going out to the ocean. Why can't we capture ASR water out of Lake El Estero and maybe other places as well? And I just thought that was brilliant. I've been working on this for eight years. It never occurred to me. And, you know, in thinking about it, it would involve the district and the city of Monterey, and, you know, with Mayor Clyde on the board, you guys have a pretty copasetta group there. So I would just suggest that you, you know, look into that idea and other places where ASR is required, and hopefully Cal-Am is not required to be involved because they just mess everything up and make it more expensive. I just think it's a really excellent idea. We should be catching all the water we can. You know, if water's flowing out of Lake El Estero to the ocean, why aren't we sending it over to the seaside aquifer? So please consider that idea. And I hope you guys have a good meeting. I won't be able to stay very long, but I'll listen for a little bit. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Joel, do you see any other member?
Paul, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so it turns back to the board.
Okay, so first we need to adopt our resolution authorizing to the meeting virtually, consistent with the Brown Act. That's action item one.
Don't move. I guess this goes, does that go out to the public before the motion?
No, I suppose technically, but I don't know that what the public would, you know.
You can accept the motion before it goes to the public if you wish, but you have to hear from the public before you vote.
Okay.
So I still move.
Second, thank you. Does the public wish to comment on this item, which is just about a meeting virtually because of COVID and authorizing us to do that for another 30 days?
Chair Paul, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so it turns back to the board.
Okay, thank you. Let's vote then.
Director Roberson? Yes. Director Anderson?
Yes, and I wish it was 60 days. You have to do this every two months.
Director Malik?
Yep.
Director Riley?
Hi.
Director Edwards?
Yes.
Vice Chair Adams?
Very, very nice.
Vice Chair Adams? Chair Paul?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so now we get to the purpose of our meeting, the strategic planning. Would you like to start us off, Dave? Oh, you're muted.
Yes, I would. Thank you. Chair Paul and I have collaborated on the kind of holdover goals and objectives from last year, which we'll see in a little bit. I'm assuming that last March's special workshops with Dr. Richard Garcia are still fresh in your mind, so you remember a lot of this, but we'll do a little bit of review first, and then we'll get into last year's goals. I don't think beyond what's in the staff note with the, I believe it was 2B exhibit was the last year's goals and objectives. We'll let that speak for itself. We will start with kind of the holdover goals and objectives that the chair and I have had a chance to look at, and then we'll look for additional input as you were charged with doing in the agenda and staff note. So with that, I'm going to screen share here. And that title has nothing to do with today. So here is a reminder of the hierarchy of strategic planning that Dr. Garcia walked the group through last year. Vision, mission, and values have been pretty much taken care of. You don't want to be in the position of revising those on an annual basis because it would be an indicator that we don't know where we're going, and we do know where we're going. And I think that the work that you did on vision, mission, and values last year will stand for a number of years, and then we'll look at it again to see if there's a change in direction of the district. Today, we're going to focus on goals and the underpinning objectives in support of those goals. And to some extent, there's strategic initiatives and priorities that will come out of it, but it's not really the subject of today's conversation. So let's remember what the difference between a goal and an objective is. A goal is a long-range direction of the organization, consistent with our mission and vision. And it's, you know, it's more of where do you want to go? And then the objectives are, this is, you know, Richard's definition, SMART, meaning specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and timely. And so it's more the how are we going to get there? You know, what actions are needed to achieve the where we want to go goal? And so with that, where I want to take us is the goals that have kind of come from last year and determine whether we want to delete any or if we want to add. So the goals from last year were first to provide a safe, reliable, sustainable, diversified, affordable, legal water supply to the Monterey Peninsula region. Personally, I don't see that that has changed as a goal of this agency. Second was pursue public ownership of the water distribution system as directed by the voters in Measure J. This goal would have changed if we had timely action in our favor from LAFCO where we expected, which was, you know, when we originally thought it was going to be October of 2021, and then we made some changes. We thought, oh, shoot, you know, by April of 20, I'm sorry, it was originally going to be October of 2020. 2020. And then we thought, well, you know, maybe by April, we'll be through the LAFCO process, and it found its way all the way to January 5th of 2022, and we did not get the answer we're looking for. So it's hard to imagine this one will go away. The third was planned for long-range surface and water groundwater resource needs, which is kind of the ongoing business of the district. Fourth was to protect and enhance the district's financial resources. Fifth was to be a regional leader on water issues, continue to raise the district profile, and instill public trust. And six was promote and enhance organizational efficiency and effectiveness. So the starting point, well, let me go backwards, is to say, are any of these ready to come off? Or do we still have work to do under all six of these goals from last year? And for that, I put it out to discussion. I can't get all of the heads back unless I stop sharing. So I guess we'll just kind of leave it like this, but this is where I'd like to hear from the board if you feel strongly that we need to eliminate one. We're going to talk in a minute about adding new goals. But, you know, what's your gut instinct on these directions of places we want to go?
So this is, this is, for my part, I think all of these goals are still just as appropriate. What do other directors think?
I agree, and they immediately, when I saw them, I said, yeah, that's still what we got to do.
Yeah.
May I through the chair?
George, yes, please.
I'm kind of looking at the near-term future in a little different lens these days. And as much as all these make sense, and they do make sense, and I'm not suggesting changing anything. But I think we're, and I don't, I don't know if it ought to be a goal or not, and maybe it's a conversation that we should have in another, another setting. But I'm seeing that the political side of water issues are far more transparent, I think, than they used to be. And that's kind of raising my awareness of perhaps we need to be more political. Now, I say that because I don't know what other word to use besides political in this, in this little commentary. But, but I think we need to be, and let me just drop down to number five as where I think I'm discussing, where I think I'm focusing. To be a regional leader, we need to initiate more things, I believe. And so continue to raise the profile, yes, that's important. Instill public trust, yes, but I'm just, I'm just looking for a little broader context on what we might be initiating or instilling as, as, as a dynamic, as a goal somehow, as an activity that we should be more focused on.
So George, let's hold on to the difference between a goal and an objective.
Okay.
If you're thinking that initiating more things or becoming a little more savvy politically is an objective in support of being the regional leader, then it would, this would remain the goal. If you're thinking that we need a stronger political strategy as a, as really a goal, then we would come up with some things to support that. So I guess we because we are going to hit a point here in the discussion where we'll take these plus any new goals and then try to define some objectives. And your charge in the board packet was both to come prepared to suggest new goals as well as to suggest objectives for each new goal or even carryover, holdover goals.
Dave, thank you for that. I'm more than willing to put it into the discussion of objectives.
Okay.
May I?
Director Malik?
Yes. And taking GM's clarification, we are pretty lame when it comes to political will and political persistence and political exposure. And I would say that that should be one of our primary goals for this year. We need to be out, and I have said that before. We need to hire a, a public relations, a strong public relations organization to be able to spread our word. And that is, that in my opinion, is a goal, and then we go into objective and see how we can implement that.
I'd like to respond to that. Again, here, I think that's an objective. I mean, I came prepared to suggest a couple of objectives along these lines, actually, because I think that the district needs to go to another level of public outreach.
Thank you.
But I consider that an objective that comes under, under the goal of well, under, under the, under some of the existing goals that we have to
I don't see where that in as a goal here.
Okay.
It's not. That needs to be primary focus of as far as one of our goals, and it cannot be buried in one of these six goals.
All right, well, that's a subject of discussion.
Thank you.
I think it, we can see what the other directors think of that. I think that under pursuing public ownership pursuant to Measure J, that public outreach, developing public outreach to deal with that very special, unique situation would, would come under that whole possibly.
And also under five, on the, continue to raise the district profile. You know, there may be an aspect to it there where, you know, we adopt a no-lame zone where, you know, we, we become less lame at, at certain things and
Yes.
really focus, my bad, really focus on that particular issue of public outreach and politics.
Yes, that's, I agree. All right.
I would say, I would add to that and just say the instill public trust is a big part of that because public trust should be non-political. It should be that wherever people are, whatever side of the political coin they're on, that that they have trust in this organization, they think we can do it. They don't think it's political. They think that we're water leaders. And I agree with you, George, on that, that that's, it's a big one. I personally think it can fit under number five.
I agree, and I, one of the reasons I think it's so important is because there's so much misinformation circulating. And if we're, if the district is going to be the reliable go-to source, you know, for good
Director Mark asked some questions.
Is that coming from?
Oh.
That's Director Adams.
Yeah. There's misinformation circulating, and we've recently seen that that can have a lot of impact. I mean, witness what just happened at LAFCO. So it's important that the district be, I think, more effective and more assertive in, in putting correct information out there that the public knows and decision-makers know, and our representatives, our elected representatives know.
So I think what I'm hearing, and we need to hear from Mary and some of the others, I don't know if the hand raise feature works for you all, but that may be a way to ensure that we know you're out there while we're in this share screen method, I mean, view. And maybe, Joel, you can look for raised hands, but I think at a minimum, based on this discussion, I would, if we're going to keep all of these issues as objectives under Goal Area 5, is to move Goal Area 5 up to Goal Area 3 as as a focus, because in conjunction with the Measure J process, you're going to need strong public outreach. You're going to need that dedicated support of, you know, a better public outreach firm or focus. So at a minimum, I'd move that goal up to be up there in the top three. And then make sure that we give primacy to the objective that we think is most important when we get into the objective setting for that goal. Director Adams, did you have some comments?
Thanks very much, and I apologize to everyone. I've got two board meetings going on right now, and I'm so sorry that I'm having to be, you know, I'm terrible at both of them. At any rate, as we're looking for, these are looking at the goals from last year to continue to go on. As I look at the goals from pursuit, put forward from to next year, it, we still have be a regional leader on water issues, and it's for next year, coordinate on regional issues with other water agencies quarterly or more often. So I guess I'm trying to figure out, are we, are we keeping this goal here the way, it's still the same goal? I don't know what, you know, what the problem is, the wording on it? I mean, we're talking about being a regional leader on both of these goals.
Right. So what happened in the process last year by Dr. Garcia's intent focus on differentiating between a goal and an objective? Is you did come up with goals that are far more universal and far more I don't want to say generic, but generic to the district. I mean, these are things that, it's going to be hard to ever eliminate one of these because these are things that we do or that we should do. And so in the past, we've had very specific goals that you know, had a lifespan, and then you look at it, you go, well, that's done, that's accomplished. But the way these goals have been defined now are yeah, we might accomplish Measure J at some point, but you're never going to accomplish a safe, reliable, sustainable, diversified, you know, water supply. That's never coming off. That's your goal year in and year out, and you'll be playing with the objectives as to well, where are we right now? And we want to focus on affordable, and this year, we're going to focus on a low-income ratepayer assistance program or something like that. That would be one of the objectives in that particular year or, you know, maybe longer term for a three-year period or something like that. But, yeah, some of these will never go away. And I think they've all been written kind of to never go away. I mean, look at four, five, and six, those are
Ongoing, yeah, forever.
Pretty ongoing forever, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
And so you end up spending more time on saying, okay, for this year, here's what we want to see. And then that's how it ends up translating to your GM's performance appraisal. And staff performs appraisal because then you say, here's where we want to go. These are the objectives. Now go get it done. Get it, get it there. And that moves it from your level to our level at staff. So. But the platitudes, if you will, you know, the overarching goals. You know, I, I don't think we can get rid of these, but I think there may be one or two new ones if, if you've got one. We don't want to keep adding and get to 10, you know, and, you know, you want to keep it in that. Six or seven, uh, range, but you know what? All I've heard so far is. There's a very strong need for better positioning of the district for when and if we have. Uh, political decisions made, you know, harkening back to the last two months where. Damn the facts, here's the politics, um. Then, you know, there, there will be a lot of he said, she said kind of information items out. If in fact you want to go to a, a hearing on public necessity. And so, you know, a concerted, uh, public outreach effort will be needed. Um, things we haven't done in the past that we know, for example, Cal AM has are phone. Surveys and data gathering to find out where you really stand, uh, you know, going into things. So. Those would be of primacy and it either becomes a new goal or as Director Paul pointed out earlier. It's a piece of the measure J goal and it's a piece of that. Uh, goal number five here.
But moving goal number five up.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense. Cause that isn't going to be forever.
I agree.
Yeah.
Now, Director Malik said earlier that he thinks this, uh, the public outreach effort, uh, needs to be a goal. Personally, I'm persuaded it is, um, after this discussion we've had that. I see it more as an objective under goals two and five, which may be reordered. I support that, um.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll tell you something else, though. Um. Just as a, as a goal, we need to solve our public outreach. Position, if you will. Um, I don't know, Mary, if you know this, because TMD works for the county. But Nick just accepted the job to work for the county. Uh, Sam had left with one or two folks so, um, earlier, about, you know, seven months earlier. So we're not sure TMD's got the resources that we need and, um, and if we're going to up our game. To meet, you know, comments that Director Malik's raised and, and others of you have raised. We may need to rethink it. And I would have no problem saying, at least for now, um. Addressing the district's public outreach needs could be a goal. Um, it'll primarily be near term. And then it'll permeate into this goal five, which will end up becoming goal three. It'll permeate into goal two, but.
The result of at least five.
Yeah, but. I could see that being a goal and it's a, it's an accomplishable goal that could come off in a year or two, but. It's in need of a fix and we don't, you know, we're in a quandary right now, having conversations back and forth about. Do we go back to an internal public outreach person? If we weren't trying to up our game, we would, yeah, I see a shake of the head with Director Malik. Um, if all we were doing are branding ads and workshops. We might even be able to do that with existing staff and then having to hire graphic staff and so forth. But if you really want a concerted public outreach campaign. See, I knew how to get Director Malik nodding instead of shaking, um, which is. And I, and I've heard that from more than one of you, that if and when this board decides to, to act on. A hearing of public necessity. And then the, the follow through, and it's not even, you don't start with the hearing of public necessity. You say. Make an offer and that's when you, uh. Authorize the additional expenditure on updating the appraisal and everything else. Once you make the decision, you want to proceed. And hopefully we're in a better position to help you with that with reconsideration, some of the other things we're doing with LAFCO. Yeah, it's, it'll be a campaign again. Even though there's not a vote and there's not. You know, a chance for, uh, individuals to affect the outcome. Well, there might be, there actually might be. So I, I don't know if that's a, a new goal or not, but we can make. You know. Address the, the near and long-term public outreach needs of the district. It is something we have to do. And it will have budget impact. So.
So the question is, shall we treat it as a goal or an objective? And, um, and I. I think we could treat it either way. So what do the other directors, uh?
And Madam Chair, I'm, I'm going to chime in here just for a moment. I think it would be helpful for, uh, the members of the public to have a sense as to when. Public comment will be allowed on this item. You can. Have that public comment at any time, as long as you do it before you take any action on this.
Well. Um, well, why don't we finish this topic and then we can pause and take on public comment, um. And we may do it again later in the discussion. So let's, um, I, I wanted to hear what the other directors thought about this question of public outreach. And shall we treat it as a goal, a new goal, or is it at this time, um. With the understanding that we're kind of special circumstances, um, or as an objective. And, um, then maybe we'll, it would be a good time to open it up to the public. Thank you. For that reminder. Yes, Director Anderson.
I, uh, I, I am now convinced, um, that it should be a goal and just because. Of where we are in this whole process. With, with the public, with LAFCO and, and I'm reminded of. The comments that I've heard from the public. During this process of the, uh. I'd say publicity. Outreach, if you want, from Cal AM and how it really did affect them and convince them it of. Certain things. It, it really had an impact. So I think we should be out there doing that. Too. It affects how the public's going to respond. In hearings, et cetera. So I think having it as a, as a goal. And then there will still be one that becomes an objective when. Uh, when we feel we've. Are effectively communicating in that way that we need to.
Oops. I think.
Sorry, I have my hands up.
Director Adams, yes, Supervisor Adams.
Thanks. So I, I agree with Amy. I feel like we've, we've thrown this around for a couple of years. And I don't think any of us is totally satisfied with the way it's gone. So let's go ahead and make it a goal. And then we will keep focused on it more. We can figure out what we want to do when we get down to the objectives. But I think, yeah, we need to have a, a goal of really having a concerted public outreach base. And, um, I think that would be very helpful for us. So, you know, I'm certainly supportive of, of us moving in that direction.
Great. So what I've done here, I just moved five up to three. Um, and then over here on new goals, public outreach revamped. So I'm calling it for now till we get a better. Um, any other directors have new goals that they came prepared to advocate on behalf of, uh, for this meeting? Uh, hi, Amy. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, well. I'm not sure that this belongs in here, but, um. I'll go back to where one of the items that we mentioned when we did the review. And that is. While we're doing. And while you're doing all this work on measure J. Uh, and I don't think that you are hiding a clone in your closet. Which would be very nice to have. I wonder about. Has there been a thought or a plan about, uh. Going forward with what the board would like in terms of hiring a, kind of an operations manager. So that you can survive this measure J business. Have you, which we need.
Yes, I think we're going to see.
I, I put something.
Under goal number six is this objective, which is support from the GM office. And we've got. Three strategies depending on where we think we're going as an organization, but. Yeah, it's, it's there, Director Anderson.
So I, um, it's, it's added to our proposed 2022 goals of under six. Uh, as, as our general manager just said, six B, I, the way I framed it for, for now. Is to determine the type of support needed in the general manager's office.
Okay.
And then create a position and fill it, I put by the end of the year. So that's new, that's new objective, near-term objective.
I see it. So, sorry, yeah, I, I, uh. Was so focused on last year's list. Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we're still back here taking any. New goal suggestions, again, remembering that this is where do we want to go? What, what is it we're trying to be? I think we've already bit off quite a bit. Um, you know, this is still a very big one, whether, uh. It's, it's slow, but it's still big and it's still, uh, up there. This one that we've talked about needs to be elevated in order both to help this one as, as well as just help the district as whole. Uh, Director Riley?
Um, the word affordability came up a while ago and I know it's listed in goal one, which is an overall issue. But there does seem to be a recent and from the state level, uh, demand. Uh, on more of, more attention to affordable housing. Uh, I'm not sure what goal this might fit in, but I think we ought to have some language about that in one of the objectives and one of the goals. There's state issues, there's legislative issues, there are local cities issues, um. Anyway.
Yep. Yeah, let's look in the objectives as we move forward for that. And if not, we'll come back and grab it. Um, because, you know, we've been working with, um. Hans at the City of Monterey as well as Bay Area, uh, Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. And. We just recently queued up Kate Daniels to do some things with John Laird, um. Hans met with the Housing Community Development. So there is some movement there. But the new, uh, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, Arena numbers are pretty much freaking out every city.
Yeah.
So, um, you know, as a service to the land use planners, you know, we're going to have to assure that. Water is available and it's available sooner to do some housing as projects are available. And, yeah, we can't let that one. Slip away. So let's look at it and make sure it's in the objectives. If not, we'll come back and maybe revisit it as a goal.
And I may have more, I may have more to say on that later when we get to it.
Now, it might, it might fit under goal what currently numbered as four on the resource needs.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, any other where I want to go? I guess it sounds like a Dr. Seuss book, you know, oh, the place you'll go. Where, any other discussion about where we want the district to go? Or do we want to focus in a little bit more on the how we're going to get there? I think we'll move to how we're going to get there. We're going to find a way to, uh, write this as a goal. Um, which we'll talk about when we get there. So thi- this is the whole, holdover goal number one. And these are the near-term objectives that kind of came out of last year, but we're looking for any more near-term. So we're working on the deep ball injection. I can tell you that we should be working on, because we just had a whole discussion with Cal AM this morning about the projections. And this is work that falls through the district. Marine Hamilton and I have been working on projections and then walking. Frankly, Monterey One Water through it to help them better understand the constraints they have on what we can deliver to Cal AM. And then coming up in a year, Marina Coast is going to take its water. Um, and so we've got what's called a waste discharge permit that affects how much water can be injected to the ground. We've got these new wells. That have changed the constraint on the system from injection capacity to. Either plant production capacity or the waste discharge permit limit. And so it's clear to us at this point that we need to expand the capacity. Uh, the district needs to contemplate whether it, uh, front runs and purchases some water. Put it in the operating reserve, but actually it would be more for with, within a year. Can we manage some of the peaks and valleys in terms of demand? Because Marina Coast Water District is going to want their water at the same time Cal AM wants their water, June, July, August, September. And so to manage that, if the district front runs and fills the reserve, that's our money. And then later in the summer, when we make it available for sale to Cal AM. Because Marina Coast is then taking water in competition in real time with Cal AM, then we get paid by Cal AM. So as long as we can be the water bank for four to five, six months at a time. Then within the context of a year, we're not putting money out there and just leaving it. But we need it, we need to get operational flexibility. So I guess what I'm telling you is. It's not really a board thing to be thinking about, but down at. Beat on the ground level, we've got a lot of work to do on making sure that we fully leverage the base project even before expansion. And so that's going to be a near-term objective for us. Um, I know that George as representative to the water master has raised issues about protective. Well levels, um, which would be kind of in this safe, reliable, sustainable area. Whereas. Uh, proper calculation of replenishment assessments and the fiction that we have right now is. Pricing replenishment assessments. Based on water supply that doesn't exist. You know, there's still some work to be done there. I'm not sure they all fit under this goal, but you know, clearly it's not represented here, um, seaside basin issues. Um, I think it's a longer term objective. We need to solve. The near-term permanent water supply issue, lift the CDO, reverse the moratorium. And that's got to happen way before we solve the water master's protective well levels. But I still think as a long-term objective, we need to be looking at that. So I would, yeah.
Dave, um. On top there, what we talking about wells three and four? Are we talking about another well? You know, I call them as one, two, three, four. Well, we got four out there now and you add in two, that's six. What about that seventh well that we've been talking about?
Yeah, um, so. We're only going to have six and the seventh and potentially eight. Uh, I'm sorry, no, I'm going to start mixing things up. We're only going to have six injection wells. So the, or, or four for the original base project. And then originally Monterey One Water through their SEIR only had one injection well for the expansion. And through the encouragement of our district and Cal AM, we basically got Monterey One Water to say. Uh. Let's put it into the project description as well number six. So that's, that's where we're at. Um, so however, there is a potential for an additional injection well. Depending on how Fitch Park ASR is utilized. So Fitch Park is currently set up to be just like ASR's. just like ASR is one and two or three and four, where you've got two pair that you could use for injection or one pair for injection, two wells. And then one for extraction. So there's still kind of we're harboring that notion that Fitch Park would be additional injection capacity and or extraction capacity. So that would be seven, if you will.
Okay, so just one more question. I'll let you go to the chair. Can we start planning for them or do we have to go next door to plan for them?
I that's a great question. We are planning for them. And so we've got.
Well, let's put it on this board up here.
Yeah.
So that's something we can look at.
So when we say work on expanding pure water Monterey capacity, we're talking about of the the first phase of pure water Monterey.
Yes, it can do so much more. It was designed as five MGD. There was a million gallons per day. There was a test for acceptance that showed it could run at five MGD. It's currently running at 3.4 because of the injection capacity constraint. In March, once deep injection well three and four come online, that injection capacity constraint goes away. So then it comes back to now you can run the plant at a higher MGD on a daily basis. We know it can easily do four. Its design was five. And so they're going to be doing some work trying to figure out what's sustainable for long periods of time in between. You can certainly run it up to five MGD million gallons per day for a few days in a row. We want to see what they could do for 30 days in a row or four months in a row. And if the 12 month steady state becomes 4.3 MGD, that's important to know. If we can run at 4.8 to five from late October through early March, where more water is available because it's not being sent to the growers in Casterville. Then we want to run it higher than build up the bank so that we hit summer. We can take care of that competition between Marina Coast and Cal AM for the summer water. And so we really need to get more out of the base project. You know, there's politics involved with the regional board permitting process and how you don't want to give them too much new information while they're already chewing on the information you've already supplied. And so right now we want them to finish what we've asked them to do. And then when they finish, we'll ask them to look at something new. But there there are there's untapped capacity in the plant. And we want to figure out how to get that. And so that's that's what that one is to be. That's just unexisting.
Dave, on that, can we get a timeline? Or how y'all want to do that or how they going to do that? That way the public can know that we starting to ramp this the capacity up.
Yeah.
Can y'all develop a timeline?
Yeah, and I think we can report back. So all of these, when they say near term, kind of means within a year. But I think what you what you're saying is, yeah, well, when can we report? When when will we actually make progress? Develop that timeline? And I can tell you today, you know, the answer from N1W is, yeah, we're starting to work on seeing what we can do, what we can make the plant do. But there's no timeline attached to that. It's a we're playing with it.
Well, but we're we're talking relatively near term, like one to three year horizon, something like that?
Yeah, this one we need. We need to solve this year, this calendar year, because going into next water year, October 1st of this year, we need to know if Marina Coast is taking the full complement of their water. Can we run at least four months a year at 4.8 MGD? And will this regional board consider yet another increase in our waste discharge permit? So that we can actually put in the ground what we need to deliver to Cal AM and and ourselves. The waste discharge permit doesn't constrain Marina Coast because that's not injected water. That's just, you know, taken off the T from the conveyance pipeline. So.
Okay.
But yeah, it's it's this year because.
Okay. This year. And then C, we were, let's finish C. I would just like to say for members of the public who who are waiting to address the board that I'd like to when we finish working our way through goal number one, that that point will pause and see if there is public comment.
Yeah, let's do that.
Just a comment. Do we then do we need in objective B, do we need to put add in 2022?
Yeah.
If it's got to be finished this year?
It's a good idea.
Yep.
Okay.
And then long term objectives, this brings us back to this in general. Are there things we need to be doing in the next two to three years? And, you know, I guess I would say if, in fact, we do move forward with the expansion. In other words, if some of the tests one has already been filed gets corrected and it seems completely doable, then we need to. Nice typo, Dave. Don't you think we should be thinking about that one?
Yes.
Yeah, I love that one if we ever get to it.
Well, it's so funny how the conversation can stray because, you know, we look at the next two years and probably need to add the third year in. And we're still tight, you know, we we've we're still kind of hoping for more rain in late February, March and April. The the company's already booked some Table 13 water rights. We've already banked some ASR water. It's not a lot. But it's pretty clear we're going to get through the current water year, no problem. We've got enough stored up that we could get through the next water year, no problem. But we really want some excess water from the base pure water project. And then we're in, you know, we're in construction at that point. So you're looking now to a date certain where you've got new supply coming online. It's there's going to be a huge sigh of relief, but the difference between what we do the next two to three years before we've got a new supply online and then what happens afterwards? It's night and day. So we are, while you can develop a plan for lifting the CDO, at the same time, we're like the hamster on the wheel dealing with the next two and a half years. And we're running really hard, but you know, I don't think it's going to take us anywhere other than let's make sure we have enough for the next six months, the next year and so forth. So a little bit of desperation. But I think this this kind of covers both near term and long term. I can't think of anything else.
So I don't like to make a comment and ask a question, Dave. I don't know whether this should come under goal one or perhaps even under goal three. But at some place, do you feel we need to address the the Rena numbers that came out of Ambag? I mean, that's pretty shocking. And when you think of the amount of water that's going to be required to meet, you know, those numbers is you know, pretty pretty difficult to fathom. So actually, I see it would have been under four if not under where we are now. But what's what's your take on that? And, you know, what's what do you think we ought to be doing about that? I just didn't want it to get lost in the conversations.
Yep. Yeah, this is old. No, this is old number. Oh, that's old number three. It's now new number four.
Now it's number four.
I'm confused between the old and the new.
Yeah, but somewhere in the old one, we had supply and demand in there.
Right.
And I looked at this year and there's no real need to. Now you just gave me the need. So now the question is, where does it go? All right, so two, three. There's there's water for housing, so that's still kind of in there, but I hear it is supply, demand, drought. So I guess it would be under here, which is updating the. Well, I guess we'd make it part of this. So the issue I have with the Rena goals is they're huge and there's no capacity. The county can never process permits. Architects and builders can't act quick enough to get as much housing as is being talked about online each year that's being asked for. It's absurd, but nevertheless.
Well, Dave, I would like for you through the chair. I like for you to run those numbers that 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 came out from the state. Just to speak, even though bring it to the public, this is what we got because to tell you the truth, one thing this thing is building to what they just added on is for need for another water project after the expansion.
Yeah, it's clearly going to accelerate the need for additional water if in fact we make reasonable progress. And, you know, that's been the issue all along, which is and and again, it was a weakness in the approval of the D cell plant is no one ever really investigated. And certainly the PUC didn't. They didn't do their own work. Which is how fast are you going to get there? I mean, if you know that this is your housing need. And in, you know, and it's I think are they usually eight year forecast? I can't recall. I'd have to go back and look, but it's not. We've never met the Rena numbers. You know, I think this is around five or six at this point. And we're probably not going to meet them again, but the pressure is on to perform better. And so you're going to see an effort made by all the jurisdictions to to make a dent. And I think that veiled threat of, you know, somehow finding a way to take state money away or gas tax away, you know, whatever it is, something away has people a little more focused on it. But I think, to be honest, and mayor and supervisor, you can probably respond as, you know, kind of general politicians. People are looking at the value of housing and there is no affordable housing really available anymore. I mean, seaside people are you know, teaming up in, you know, sharing homes, roommates and so forth. And still the prices housing has gone up and up and up. And if seaside's baseline and Marina's baselines are all driving upward, we got nothing. You know, how do you lure a new candidate to come work here if they can't live here? And, you know, it's so this issue is not going to go away. I think it's still problematic for us while we're still under the CDO. And that's, you know, all the difficulty we've been having with getting HCD and the State Water Board to communicate.
Exactly, exactly. That's.
But I agree the need to run those Rena numbers. So go ahead supervisor.
No, I was saying just completely agree with you. It's it's almost like there's a battle at the state. And if I'm not mistaken, I think there are a number of new people on the Department of Water Resources Board. So, you know, that, you know, shifts things a little bit as well. So I don't know where we go from here. But I do feel like it's something that we have to at least weigh in on and should have a presence on when it when we talk about the the amount of water that's needed. Because it's I agree with you, David, they're going to be impossible, period. That's all there is to it.
And I think in the interest of time, let's go out to the public after we finish number two instead of number one and then.
I'd like to, I know that Mayor Roberson has to leave soon, so let's check and see if he if he wants to has comments he wants to provide.
No, thank you. I'm just listening, have no disagreements with with anybody said. I could pontificate a little bit on human relations changing LAFCO's minds. That's not going to happen, but we want to focus about if we were going to go with public outreach and and hire firm, we need to really focus on what we expect them to do. Then secondly, the Rena numbers have been with us forever. The State Water Resources Control Board and Housing and Community Development in the state don't talk to each other. Then the Coastal Convention says you can't build in certain areas because of sea level rise. And so they're denying permits. So the state is in disarray. And they came right point blank out and said they want to start affluent areas, quote unquote, or aren't doing their fair share of housing. Okay, well, that's not the facts. And I could tell you what Monterey has done and we're still waiting. We can put about five or 600 homes and units right now with the water. So the state absolutely drives me crazy. So that was that's my remark.
Is the water the only impediment to those?
Yeah, we've rezoned it and we have people ready to build on Garden Road.
Yeah.
Yep. And so and and then I talked to our representatives. Well, we can't fight this and that because this is an important person. And then then you have SB nine turning all single family areas into quadruplex. And is that going to impact the affluent areas? No, what's it's going to do is corporations are going to buy this up and they're going to drive people out of homeownership even worse. So aren't you sorry you asked what I was thinking? But I do have to get my grandson and I will pick this up later. So thank you all for what you do.
We'll make sure to get more of your input.
Okay. You're so kind. Bye bye, everybody.
Bye. Bye.
Okay, so Dave, did you want to go out to the public now? Would you rather wait till after goal number two? I know there is. There's one person who wants to comment on goal number two.
On number two or number one?
On number two.
Yeah, so let's get through number two and then we can do three and four together and then maybe five and six together. Though and they'll get easier. So goal number two is the continued pursuit of Measure J. A reminder to any of our attendees that we are doing the public's bidding. This was not a discretionary action of our board. This was an initiative. And some of that seemed to get lost on the LAFCO commissioners. But, you know, this is a you know, is a victory by 12 points, 56 to 44. So we need as a district to pursue this to its conclusion. And I think that remains an objective. I mean, a goal and the objectives, you know, obviously are at this point deal with the downfall of the LAFCO process. This says seek judicial review, you know, that has started. You authorize us to hire attorneys. We exhausted negotiation through George's efforts. We're working on reconsideration right now. There was something I requested by last Friday and it's coming in today. So we've lost a week on part of the draft, but you all see something to look at probably Tuesday or Wednesday that hopefully we can turn around. We don't want to drag it up to the last minute. But anyway, so we get the LAFCO process. We have the option of moving forward with an offer, an appraisal, and then hearing a public necessity with or without LAFCO at this point. Ask Dave Laredo more about that. Here's a piece of that upgrading our public outreach that you know, that I think is a near term goal because communication is important. I just don't know if there's anything else that you see related to our Measure J struggle that needs to be a near term objective for this calendar year. If so, I'd love to hear about it. On the long term, you know, once we get to where we think we are, we're going to undertake a rate study that will obviously change when you get to the valuation proceeding and so forth. Bench trial can't really start to 2023 if we're not really there yet under, you know, the board actions until late 2022 or 23 and then succeed and so forth. So.
Well, one one thought on to answer your question, Dave, on the long term objectives related to Measure J, and this really is long term, and maybe we we put it aside for for. We put it aside for, for here or two, and that is, um, if we are moving forward. Of, at some point, we have to think about how will, how would. The district as an organization change in order to. You know, take on its new role and I mean, it's, it's years away, I realize, but at some point we, I don't know at what point we. Should begin to think about it, but um, it's out there somewhere. We have. Changes of the organis-, you know, in the organization.
That's a very good point.
Yeah, and, and just so you know, um, it's huge, there, you know, if you. Move down the line and the bench trial says. Yeah, it's um. It's in the public interest. There is a, you know, a. Public necessity. As you move closer to. Buying it, you have to have a transition plan in place, we have to look at their union MOUs. Will end up hiring, you know, benefits person to see how we keep our people whole and their people, make their people whole on a comparable basis. You know, this whole variety of things that you, you need to do. It will take a while, so that's organizational planning and then we already looked at the organization chart, but you know, as time passes, theirs changes, you know, ours changes. But. You know, we basically know what we need, but as you get closer, absolutely, it'll be. You know, you'll be hunkered down with. A lot of HR work, a lot of uh, transition work. Uh, you have to have an agreement in place about what happens to the, the payables and receivables, you know, as, as nitty gritty as that and so forth, so. Uh, yeah, a lot of, a lot of work to do.
Through the chair, Dave, I also like for you to. And if, with the board blessing to find out. How long our material is good for.
Right.
I think, I think the public would like to know, okay, are, are we, are we good? Or if we go another year, another two years, we're going to have to go back and do another study or whatever. I think we, we, I, I think the public and myself would like to know that.
Yeah, and. And, and I think what I'm, um, what I'm going to tell you is I don't think we need to go out and update. Um, I can tell you there's two Manat attorneys on the. Phone right now and their whole strategy will be to cast out. And uh, make it so we have to update. But the legislative or, you know, quasi. When, legislative decision you made earlier to go to this stage was. We've seen enough that it is financially feasible. And that's not going to change, that's, that's not going to change because, you know, CPI was this, that year or uh. New rate base has been added to the CalM system. The fundamental. Conclusions of the feasibility study. Will be the same if you update it, and so I think the first step would be going back to ref tell us. And having them tell us why the fundamental conclusions won't change. Because you do not want to do this again. Uh, a year from now, you have, you have enough information as a deliberative body. As the district to say, this isn't a whim. We've seen what we need, we're moving forward, but you're always going to get the detractors saying, well, you're on old information.
Okay, but, but, but what I'm trying to say is I like, like what you just said. To say it in a public meeting, official, this is official, but the public really is not picking that up. Isn't, is, is not enough of them out there, you know. It's, it's the ones that close to the water situation right now, but I like that to be, 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 be said. Just like that, because that's going to be the next big question. Do we need to update or whatever and, and right now, but you told me we're good. But way Laughco is dragging this out. I want to make sure we stay good.
Yep.
That's going to be in our public outreach.
Good point, Amy.
Mm-hmm. Both of you.
Okay. Okay, and I don't, I didn't hear anything new on. Near term objectives. On the longer term, this is a very good one that. You almost need to get through the near term before you say, oh, we're going to invest our time in this, but. You know, you know, while we're getting pounded with depositions and uh, data requests and, you know, discovery, if you will. In between the bench trial and the jury trial, assuming we get there. There's a whole bunch of this stuff that has to start occurring. Kind of behind the scenes, so it would be a parallel, parallel situation.
And that's yet another reason we'll need more. More support in, in general manager's office. That'll be a lot of work, as you said a few minutes ago, be a lot of work, right?
I have, I have a laboratory, we're working on cloning.
Good.
Yeah, and we've had some sidebar conversations and, and for the benefit of the, the whole board. There's two to three scenarios of, of where this district's going that may result in. Getting a, a junior level person to work in water resources or in conjunction with water resources and administrative. Or if we're heading down the path and we've gotten, you know, that we're through the bench trial. Then we need somebody to basically become a director of operations here while we. Deal with everything else and, and the hard part is that in between. There's so much attention that has to go into. The appraisal, both, both the enterprise as well as the real estate. The process of making an offer, the findings, this is going to be a, 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 a big effort because the last draft was, you know, a year old at this point and there's a lot of updating. And if you don't know if you're getting through the bench trial, you may not want to staff up yet. And so that's where, you know, it'll, it'll be problematic, but anyways, let's, let's leave um, one and two and go out to public if there are comments.
Yes, uh, this is a reminder, if you would like to make public comment on goal number one and number two, you would need to raise your hand, or if you're calling in, post star nine. Um, at this time, I would like to share my screen and directors, let me know if you're able to see the timer there.
Yes, yes, we can.
This time, I would like to invite George Sonif, Sonif, when you're ready, uh, please present your comment.
Uh, good afternoon, I'm George Sonif, as some of you probably know. I am the attorney for CalM. I suspect I'm very popular with the district and all of you. But be that as it may, I know that uh, you, you do all operate in good faith. And since today you're revisiting the district's goals, I want to suggest that. Further considered analysis of the CalM takeover goal is both appropriate and necessary. The district's prior cost and timing projections for a CalM takeover. Were understated by orders of magnitude. It has spent millions more than it projected just two years ago. That planning error is not without consequence to the public. Now the district is proposing to march ahead. And launch a lawsuit challenging Laughco. Again, with unrealistic timing estimates and no cost estimates. Any informed lawyer will tell you that the odds of success in that case are low. But more importantly, I know your lawyers will tell you. That even if the lawsuit was successful, no court will order Laughco to approve the district's proposal. The best the district can get in litigation is a do-over at Laughco. And this planned litigation, the appeal process and the administrative aftermath of going back to Laughco. Even if it's successful, will take at least two years and almost certainly more. Before there's any legal ability for the district to even begin to do, to do the appraisal and pass the resolution and begin the eminent domain lawsuit. Then after that, the cost will be extraordinary. New financial analyses and appraisals will have to be presented. And the district will face the exposure that you've probably heard me talk about and write about. The monetary exposure to CalM if it doesn't succeed in the entire takeover process. You don't have to pay all of CalM's costs, including those incurred in these years, these three years and ongoing. Before the eminent domain cases filed, those are all recoverable. So I urge the board to be clear-eyed about whether adopting the measure J goal that you have today. And spending millions more on lawyers and consultants will impair the district's ability. To implement its other goals, which really relate to its core functions and objectives to supply water to Monterey. Measure J does not require or the district to embark on a, what is a, a financial kamikaze mission. It requires a policy to pursue takeover if and when feasible. Are the words of the measure. And notwithstanding Mr. Stolt's certainty that nothing will change. The feasibility of this effort deserves to be revisited in the context of the district's other important goals as well. It would be easy to simply adopt this goal of fighting Cal.
Yeah, three, three minutes are up.
Okay, but yeah, thank you, thank you very much, appreciate the time.
Do you want any other hands up?
No, no other hands already.
Okay, alright. Chair Paul.
Actually, I take that back, we have Michael there. This is his hand. Directors are you able to see the timer?
Somebody poked the bear.
Directors, are you able to see the timer?
Yes.
Michael, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Bear been poked. I just have to report, you know, just to suggest to Mr. Sonoff that. Um, you know, you're holding us hostage. Twenty-four thousand people voted for this initiative because we've been getting screwed by CalM for over fifty years. And, and I'm, I'm very glad to hear. The board. Honor that. There are ways around Laughco, there will be. Even might even be through the California legislature tweaking a law. Uh, it's unjust, you've got five, you know, these, these board members voting their own special interests. When people have been suffering under CalM for decades and decades. And I just take offense at your attitude, you, you just disrespect. The peninsula and just say, oh, CalM's fine and you guys are going down a, a money trap and uh. I just find it unconscionable and yes, you're not our favorite person. Thank you.
Alright, any more hands, Joel?
Dave, I do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I return this back to the board, uh, actually. Okay, we have Marley Mountain.
Okay.
Marley. When you're ready, please present your comment.
Uh, just uh, as a comment on the relevance of your new dis, new goal to. Engage in stronger public relations, I thought it was interesting to note the confidence that Mr. Sonof displayed. That CalM has the full and will always have the full support of every member. Of Laughco, even if any of that changes. I think that highlights the need for a very sophisticated public relations process. Focuses not only on the public at large, but on key levers of influence. And decision-making throughout Monterey County. And I mean also considering specific leaders. In important economic areas for the county. As well as less formal, but still very important leaders. And I don't want to go into a lot of detail here. I'm sure Mr. Sonof already knows who they are and has already contacted most of them, it's time for Monterey. It's time for the district to do the same, thank you.
Let's just give it a couple of seconds and see if anybody else.
Yep.
Do not see anybody with their hands raised, so I'll turn this back to the board.
And, uh, Director Malik.
Thank you. The bullying continues. Bully, bully, bully. Bully, bully. And we certainly um, are capable of taking care of ourselves. And thank this mister, whoever his name is, for his care about our district. Time for you to go home.
Um, I did want to highlight uh, something that, that Mr. Sonif said. Uh, he said even if you. You know, even if we work our way through litigation and, and prevail. It's simply a do-over with Laughco, it's not quite that way typically, um, when we, when the district. Won and, and Dave Laredo, you can weigh in at some point, but when we won uh. Against the Public Utilities Commission. At the state Supreme Court level several years ago over the user fee. The direction, of course, they send it back to the entity, um, so they sent it back to the PUC. But the direction was to. Run it through your process again, keeping in mind the direction of the court. Which is different than saying. Do-over, just run it through your process again. And the direction of the court was pretty clear. That they agreed that our user fee was an independent local. Uh, fee and charge similar to uh, a utility. You know, utility tax, if you will, pass through. And it was in support of local agency thing, so the, the NFX said. Yeah, go back to the initiating agency for your issue. But that agency needs to look at it in the context of the decision by the courts, which is. Different, I don't know, Dave.
I would agree, it's a fool's errand to try to ascertain what Laughco would do after a court trial. We haven't even finished this version of Laughco's decision-making, we are anticipating a request for reconsideration. Yes, we are anticipating that if it doesn't go our way that we would uh, anticipate litigation. But we don't yet know what the full scope of the existing Laughco decision will be. Uh, we certainly can only speculate as to what uh, grounds the uh, appellate court or, or the uh, trial court would uh, have in terms of overturning Laughco and what direction would be given. And it, Mr. Sonoff has promised that that would likely go to an appeal, uh, so that would be, appellate court would weigh in on that. And uh, if then it is remanded to Laughco for decision-making, it certainly would be remanded with some direction. Uh, so it's pure speculation as to what that scenario would be.
Yeah, thanks.
Does, we, the district have the benefit of our own excellent counsel and I think we can move on.
Yeah. Okay, um, in the interest of time, we've been in ninety minutes, basically pretty close, um, I do think it gets easier as we move to some of the more. Difficult or, or. Traditional goals, but let's. Get back in it. At uh, goal number three, which is regional leader on water issues, continue to raise the district profile and instill public trust. Recognizing that we moved. Somewhere in here. Where are you? There we go, the public outreach became its own goal. So, um. We've talked about the housing and the need to rerun uh, supply, demand numbers as if Rena was realistic. So we'll do that. Uh, this is a carryover coordinating on regional issues, uh, which you, you should be pleased to know that we do, um, we've gotten together. Monterey One, ourselves, uh. County and Marina Coast, and then in another setting. We actually have CalM, Cal Water Service, um. Marina Coast, ourselves, County Water Agency and so forth, so. We're doing a lot of that, I'm not sure if we've got a common objective other than to keep talking about uh, what's going on in each of our areas and how we could help.
Could I ask that we add something under B, coordinate on regional issues with other water agencies quarterly? Or more often and participate in regional water discussions?
Yep. And what happened to our January special meeting?
It's March eighth.
Oh.
March is the new January. Ah.
Participation in.
Um.
Regional.
Water.
Water, water discussion or forums or.
Yeah. Very glad that has been scheduled. We're still working things out, but yes, it's definitely scheduled. It will take place during the March eighth board meeting.
Excellent.
Riley wants to say something.
Well, just a question, Dave, about the Salinas Valley GSA. Uh, you didn't mention that specifically, and I just don't know what role they're playing in this dialogue across agencies.
Yeah, it's been tough. Actually, John Lear. Uh, has participated uh in their tack and observing their meetings. Um, we've coordinated with respect to some wells in the Corral de Tierra sub area. Um, so there's interaction, but yeah, from a planning perspective. Um, you know, I think. A little more involvement would be useful because what you have is, you know. The Salinas Valley, the new alliance with the George. Is it Fons? Or Forte? I can't recall his last name.
Fontes.
Yeah, Fontes. Um, that group. Has probably a lack of understanding that's been created by talking to the Nancy Isaacsons and the Salinas Valley Coalition. And the Norm Roots and the. The Farm Bureau. And so I think. More coordination, you know, renewing that, and that's going to come in importantly with respect to expansion. Because there's still the kind of misstatements about where water comes from. And so you listen to Mayor. Craig, you know, Kimberly, you know, half of her statement on December sixth was no more Salinas Valley water. It's about the Salinas Valley water situation, which is related to the. Uh, the GSA and the Plan GSP. So I think you're right, George, that. It will serve us to be better coordinated with. Um, them.
I I just wonder if, you know, if we specifically said that. The long term objective on working with Water Master and affected affected parties. On replenishment and protective water levels in. In this seaside Water Master could be improved by explicitly mentioning the need for court, by mentioning the need. For coordination with Monterey Marina Coast Water District and Salinas Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency. You know, if we talked, if we called it out specifically. Um, and especially that, as you mentioned, Dave, the Monterey Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan. Because there is the interconnectedness between the seaside basin and the Monterey sub basin. That we call it out specifically, it could, it could be helpful to us.
Um, Mary, if I could just jump in quickly, I'm not so sure we want to jump ahead of Water Master. Uh, one of the dilemmas that I think was the Water Master and the Water Management Agency, our district, our district. Is that the Water Master seems very willing to hand the problem off to us. And to solve the problem, to raise the money, to figure out where the money is coming from, how you play, how you go forward and so on. I think there. And my issue with them is they got to take some responsibility themselves on identifying where the revenue might come from. What role they could play in generating revenue. There's a two eighteen process that I don't even know if they can do it or not, but. They refuse to discuss it, uh, which is a revenue arrangement. Uh, and they've done no work on infrastructure and target priorities or anything. It's just, they're saying, we have a need and we want to. My version, they hold it against me on my my wording on some of this stuff. Um, but they 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 want to pass responsibility on to someone else. That's my reading of what they've been doing so far. And so I think if we put something very specific in our objectives. If we do anything, it ought to be general and not very specific. Until at least the Water Master, and we can revisit this next year. But until the Water Master takes some specific action on their own. To show that they're in the mix for solution, not just identifying a problem.
So how do we address that?
Well, don't, don't be too specific in the objective. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, and and we did put a seaside basin water levels. Related to our just general water supply. Uh, planning discussion. Um, and this certainly could have been moved to the other. You know, this one, uh, if need be, but. Um, you know, as we sit here. You know, I think if we just single out the Salinas Valley for now. Um, that gets us a lot further and that that would be in conjunction with Monterey One Water because they actually have a. You know, a direct working relationship. And they've got assets that are. You know, kind of in the valley, but. Um, we definitely need to up our game with them and so.
You do not think we should mention Marina Coast Water District, though?
Uh, well, you know, if we coordinate, they're in there. I mean, that's. Yeah. But then we should just, you know, we include the.
I maybe, you know, put on our big boy pants and just go ahead and call them out, coordinate, communicate. That that's even better.
Yep. I'll get, I'll make that revision.
Okay, and then I had another question as I went back and was looking through it. I saw that. Um, we removed the objective that was partnering on a regional D cell project. And want to know what what happened to that?
Uh, yeah, I think that. Well, I'll be straight up. We kind of looked at it. We said that discussion is not going to happen for a for a ten year period. Um. But it kind of depends back on what Salinas Valley GSA decides because if. You know, what what will drive a regional D cell project? Faster, since we're doing pure water Monterey expansion. Is going to be our. Cal Water, you know, is Cal Water Service willing to go off of a few of their wells that have the nitrate problems? Participate in a D cell plant and need it sooner than the peninsula needs it. Um. You know, if there was an impetus, we would certainly be part of that planning. But we're not going to need, well, you know, gosh, this is such a tough one because. Phase two of the current application to the CPUC is all about. Cal AM's own D cell plant and sizing and need and timeline. Which again, kind of flies in the face of a regional solution. Um, our district current opinion is we don't need either one for. More than twenty years. But, you know, in California, you start planning ten years early. So we kind of looked at it as. Well, that's a, that issue is ten years out. But, you know, that's when we need to plan for it, but we'll participate all along the path. But it's not indicated right now as being something we need. And, you know, even Liberty Utilities proposal for the. You know, the brackish water D cell and and dealing with it only within. The Salinas Valley at first because of agency act considerations. You know, I don't even see that one moving forward, but. But supervisor, I totally get it. Um, it's been talked about that that's where if if this area is ever going to have a D cell plant. It probably shouldn't be Cal AM's own. It should be a regional plant.
Yeah.
Yep, with a pipeline to Salinas.
And a broader, you know, to serve a much wider area and, you know, more ratepayers to support it, more users. Yeah.
And I think, you know, even SoCal Creek, you know, they've gone with fifteen hundred acre feet of recycled water and fifteen hundred acre feet. Of conservation savings. That may prove to be. Uh. Unachievable. And then City of Santa Cruz still has its issues. They were only going to do their SC squared D cell plant as a. From Santa Cruz's perspective, as a drought resource. But not a baseline resource and SoCal Creek was going to use it as a baseline resource because it got canceled. SoCal Creek went into that fifteen hundred and fifteen hundred acre foot. Planning scenario, but you can still get water to them by getting it to Watsonville. And so. A regional solution still makes sense from a water need standpoint, but it's not clear that it makes sense from the cost of conveyance. And then you got North County, which has a separate issue, which is, um, you know, they're all on wells. Uh. And I'm not just talking like Granite Ridge style problems, but even, um, you know, just all the water. That's being distributed in, you know, along the the one fifty six corridor with the, you know. Different Oaks communities. They would need a distribution system which would be vastly expensive. So. And I know the county looked at that about twelve years ago. So I don't think all the issues for how to receive the water from a regional solution have been fully vetted. But, um. We only left it off because we didn't see it happening in the next ten years. Even though it's a good idea.
Yeah, I worry that if the word isn't there, the planning won't even start.
Yeah.
When you think about the, we've got, we're putting in things about Rena. And, you know, that does shift everything, even though. Maybe we would even be able to come back and tell the Rena people from, look, we tried. We even said we were going to go after D cell to help address the additional housing we were going to get. But, uh, you know, I know them stretching the mark a little bit. I don't know, I I just. Well, would it make sense to say that? When there is the, if and when a regional. Just a regional discussion of a regional D cell. Uh, facility begins in the county that that the Water District will participate? Does that, uh? Does that capture what you think we should say, Mary, or not quite? You know, having the word in there, Karen, I think is just important. And maybe if we said continued discussion of regional solutions and then in parentheses, desalination, et cetera. Would probably be enough to do it. Yeah.
Or how about I just say continued discussion of regional D cells solution?
Yeah.
Um, under water resource needs because. You you're absolutely right. You can't just not talk about it.
Mm hmm.
Um, one of the mistakes we've made, uh, not we, the district, but we as water planners have made is thinking that everything is solely. Local. And, you know, i- if you look at the proximity we have to Marina Coast, now geographically, we're different. They're sitting on a shelf of sand. And we're a combination of sand dunes and and fractured rock around here. Um, our lift is so much greater with the the hills and the valleys and so forth. The Marina Coast is just kind of like. You know. Take a, take a board and tip it towards the ocean. That's your geography, right? Um. But as I've often said, and you've heard me say this, you could airlift this entire footprint and drop it in LADWP. And it just disappears. And and so this place is not so big that we shouldn't be looking at things regionally. Um, so it's got to go somewhere. It either has to go in the long range surface and groundwater needs or. That regional discussion. I think it belongs in long range.
Well, long range planning of resource.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think that that certainly pleases me.
Okay.
Mary, this is a good addition because I just had a conversation this morning with someone that said they heard that the district is not supportive of any regional D cell solution, period. I said, where in the hell do you hear that?
Yeah, I've heard the same thing.
Yeah.
Ah. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that and that's unfortunate because I think we all see. That the next. Increment of water is going to be from D cell. Um, you know, maybe there's additional peaking we could do with winter wastewater. But eventually, long term, depending on, you know, what the. The growth. Print looks like around here. Yeah, the D cell would be reliable. You know, the ocean's there. It's right next door. It'd be more drought resistant. So it'll happen, but I think. What people objected objected to was six, you know, six thousand dollar or fifty eight hundred dollar per acre foot water versus two thousand.
Yeah. My belief from what we need is places like. Uh, you know, the Saudi Saudi deserts and and Israel are just. Doing it for a fraction of what what Cal AM was attempting to put forward to us. So. You know, I don't know if we've looked around the world enough. Hmm.
Yep.
Plus, the technology is evolving, uh. Yes. In a major ways.
George?
Yeah, um, I I just want to say that George Sonoff has kind of put us all on notice. That Cal AM is doing everything possible to slow it down, interfere, support their own D cell and so on. So when I hear a rumor that the district doesn't support regional D cell, I think I smell the rat. Uh, so, you know, the message is coming is the message is out there and we should not feel intimidated by it. But we know it's out there and I think our mission is to kind of put our message out there.
That's great. I agree with you, George. Good points. I do, too.
All right. Anybody think we can move on from goal area three?
I I'm ready.
Okay, so that brings us to four, which we've already kind of stuck our nose in. With the D cell discussion. So what we had left over is the Los Padres Alternative Study. Um, I had hoped to get it done this calendar year. Pretty much the week after we adopted the strategic goals, I was told that it would be July of twenty twenty two. So. Thanks, staff. Um, so here we are. We're looking this year. Um. And what's interesting about this is it's driving a lot of discussion right now about fish passage. Um. It's still pretty clear that National Marine Fisheries Service harbors a a long term goal of removing Lost Padres Dam. But, um. Whether you do or whether you don't, if you keep it, there's going to be a couple hundred million. And if you don't keep it, there's going to be a couple hundred million. So it's not a good outcome either way, but at least we'll finally get the conclusions this year. That's been about a four year study. Um. You know, I guess we could move that Water Master. Objective from the earlier. One, because this one is. Safe, reliable, sustainable. You know, the seaside basin water levels, that does go to sustainable. So I don't know if it belongs here, but because it's actual action, it could. Also.
Long term re, uh, resource planning?
Yeah.
I agree. Then move it over.
Okay, and I think, you know, in in some respects, it's, um. Near term because it's near term and long term. Because I think, you know, there's that pressure to actually start planning. Meeting on it right now. But implementation, you know, if you have to do a an assessment. And divvy it up by zones or whatever, that's that's the three year, two to three year process, so.
So it's one of those things that's both near term and longer term. And wouldn't that be true of, uh? Exploring possibilities of partial public funding?
For for that same purpose, you mean?
Well, I mean, for very, for, you know, for replenishment.
Oh, right here. Yeah.
For for projects that we we for replenishment or protective water levels. And then longer term for possible other projects.
Yep, great point. And so. Uh. This year, you know, we've actually agreed, I think. Chris Cook and I have a meeting either on Tuesday or Wednesday on this topic. Um, so there's this near term discussion, but yeah, the the reality is it's this explore. Partial or whole. Well, it's just public.
Public funding, yeah, just.
Yeah.
Whatever we can get.
This is going to take a while and it's going to result in. Arguments over who's responsible for picking up the cost. Arguments over who's responsible for picking up the cost. Uh, it's going to ent- entail, why do we want to spend more money on this when we're spending money on? Actual water supply that helps us today, you know, proved to me that you need this now to protect the remainder of the seaside basin. So it'll be a, a. Very interesting discussion, but to put dollars on it, you know, we've, so our meetings right now are basically about, um, looking at examples. Um, there's the groundwater replenishment to Southern California that has done indebtedness to. Create recharge facilities. Um. So we're looking at those things now. So we're, we're. Honoring the intent to discuss it. But it's really not one of my personal priorities or my staff's personal priorities right now. Cause we've got so much other stuff going on. So it's going to end up being long-term objectives.
Well, uh, Dave through the chair, uh. That's why I was looking at the legislation thing about those grants out there about for water. One thing I'd like for us to do, if I know it's, you don't have the time for it, but hire a grant writer just to try to get something. For that, if, if, if it doesn't get there, if we can't get there, I don't believe in doing a, a Prop 218 for it.
Yeah. No, it's a great point. So like, uh, I think it was the last board meeting, I walked you through the federal infrastructure bill.
Yeah, I remember that.
And we've identified the, the places where there's some opportunity. Didn't look like there's a whole lot that would benefit the groundwater basin. But the governor's budget that just came out has a bunch of infrastructure pockets of money available. So we're just getting through that one. Um, right now, but I, you know, I think that there may be some, some money. Most of the groundwater money goes to Sigma related because they want to help people get their GSPs done and enacted and so forth. But yeah, I, I completely agree that there's, you know, three or four different. Big infrastructure packages that we need to hone in on. Um, and if there is money available, that'd be a great place to use it.
You know, and.
Don't have money.
And I know we're just not paying these folks just to, to look at them. I, I, I believe we need to use them to help us get these grants. You know, we hired a grant writer, but they, they gotta push it through the legislation and stay every four months, we have a meeting, this, this, this. And we send in M thousands of dollars a year, you know, we'll talk about that during the budget or whatever. But I, I, I believe, uh, they, they gotta show me something.
Yep.
So I imagine that the next meeting of the legis-, our legislative committee will actually be able to dig into what. Possibilities can be found there in the state, at the state level.
I, I like to see that or have that discussion. Do we need them?
Okay.
We, we talking about public outreach. The public outreach I'm thinking about, we need money for it because our staff don't have time to do it. They need to do it.
Yeah. Well, we should certainly consider. Whether, you know, we're getting what we need and whether the cost of it is reasonable from the legislative consultants. And what more we might need. Yeah, well, let's discuss it in committee.
Okay. Uh, this one that I just added, um. You know, as of January 1st, Calam's down to its legal limit off the river. Um, because this water year is a combined year, it's a little higher than what it's going to be for next water year. But basically they're there. Um, and what that does is it magnifies the impact of the non-Calam pumpers. Off the river because they're, they're under no order to change anything. And in fact, there's been a little bit of mission creep. Uh. Among the non-Calam pumpers is they put in grapes instead of nut trees and, you know, a variety of different things. So. Um. We'll have John Lear in the context of those rules and tables that we adopt every September. Uh, start looking in again at the, uh, total resource area for the Carmel River. We need to maybe make some adjustments on what the baseline pumping assumption is for non-Calam. So that's. Just came to me as, than earlier today, and I wanted to get that across to you. And a long-term objectives, which is both short and long, but. Do we see anything else for just our normal?
Quick, quickly, Dave, I mean, through the chair on the long-range C or discussion of regional D cell. Um, I wonder if the D cell, uh, options as opposed to solution. Um, I mean, or, or D cell and supply options, something like that, because. There's, there's some interest in, uh, the 11043 rights off of the Salinas River. And that may or may not get some traction. And I don't know where it stands in the GSA, Salinas Valley GSA. Um, but there are options beyond D cell, but it's still regional. Regardless, it's all regional. Um, I, I just want to leave it open for, it's more than just D cell, but clearly D cell is one of the options, clearly. And that's spelled out precisely here.
Yeah, and I think to, um, accommodate Mary's concerns, which are legit, is there's been discussion of a regional D cell approach. Um, so we need to keep it kind of identified separately so it doesn't just completely die.
Yeah.
And then recognize that there are other regional water supply options, um, that we should be working on. You know, again, I, I still shake my head because I thought we had the perfect idea for the 11043 water right that we kind of took. Took to MCWRA and a few people at the county in 2013. And the fact that they did not go for it. It's kind of disappointing. So Mary, just so you know, uh, as a county supervisor. We put together a plan that would have leased about 13% of the 11043 water right. Now we know there's water availability issues because it's a water right. With, you know, coming from the dams, two points of diversion, one of which is near Solidad, the other was near Spreckles. And there are many times during the course of the world of the, you know, the time continuum. Where you'd have years where not much water makes it to. The mouth of the river. And so our, our whole point was we would take it at the rubber dam, you know, probably put in another pump and so forth. And it still looked really good. It was a, you know, it was a river water treatment facility up in. That area where we ended up doing pure water Monterey and, and actually the proposed D cell plant would have been. And oh my God, you know, talk about lettuce curtain issues. This preceded the whole pure water Monterey discussion where we opened the tent up more and. Actually had participation of the valley, just the concept of. Lending for, for money. I mean, we would have been putting three to 400 million dollars into. The county each 30-year period. Um. And it just fell flat. It was absolutely, you know, we'll solve our own problems, you solve your own problems. It's like, you know what? The 400 million to solve your problems? No, go away. So I think we're in a better place now, but. So let's, um, let's go out to the public on goals three and four. And then we can try to wrap this up in 12 minutes.
So if you have a public comment on items or goal number three and number four, please raise a hand, or if you're calling in, press star nine. You do not see anybody with their hands, so it turns back to the board.
Great. Let's make sure we've got these right.
I'm, I'm looking for, I'm looking for the reference to Rena. Uh, I can't find where that ended up.
Under. Your terms.
Yeah, it's right here.
A.
Goal number three. Goal number three.
They, uh, somebody just raised their hand.
Okay.
Okay.
Now is this going to be three or four?
This one just deleted. So, one, two. Three. Four, four.
Oh, wait, I thought.
No.
Long-range resource needs, isn't that four?
That's four.
Yeah.
That's four.
Yeah.
No.
I know.
That's four. That's. What has happened? All right. Back to the mothership. Water supply, public ownership, regional.
All leader, yeah.
Water supply, public ownership, regional, right?
And then four is a.
Long-term, long range.
Yeah.
Did I just delete that one? Oopsie.
It was.
Yeah.
Three, but it's going to be four.
Yeah.
There we go. So there's three, there's four, that becomes five. All right.
That's, that's five.
Right.
Nope. Okay, so these are, you know, financial issues, um. You know, one of, one of the other takeaways I want you to keep in mind too, um. Mr. Sonoff talked a lot about the exposure of the district in it. Um, I commend Director Malik for kind of putting that comment where it belongs, which is, I, I think we can take care of ourselves. But, um, that exposure. When, when you look at the Burksen study, the third-party study, you know, he picked a couple of numbers and I'll be able to tell you where those numbers came from and so forth and so on. But at the end of the day, that includes our component. And we will have already paid for our component. So there is a statement in the Burksen study that I said something like, so if you take out. You know, what the district probably is paid for on a pay-as-you-go basis. That the exposures could be as high as 12 million. Well, that is less than our current reserves. Um, and this is years off in the future. So the, the exposure is not nearly what people have kind of hysterically referred to as the exposure. I just want you to keep that in mind. Um, so on the financial resources. One of those. Of course, is going to be that we need to give very close attention to our reserves. And our reserve position, that's not really reflected anywhere in here. What, what you see here, A through E. These are just the same as last year. Every year we want to get our GFOA award, we want to keep our transparency certificate. We want to get a little bit better on our Pers and OPEB. So all we did last year was we said. All right, we're going to double it from 100,000 to 200,000 because we can, but, um. I think we could still do a little more work to give you. Some rubrics for what should be happening. And what happens here with Pers and OPEB affects how much user fee gets used up before it becomes available to offset. The water supply charge. So the whole issue of sunsetting depends on what we do over here with the user fee.
Ah.
Uh, paying down the portion of the mechanics bank loan, we got to do that again. We budgeted for it this year. We'll do it again next year, but next year's budget's going to have to include the payoff. Um, which will be lower than it was because we're doing this annual pay down, but there's still a payoff amount. Um, this one, uh, improved asset management documentation and funding, this is a bit of a vestige of Director Hoffman. Um, and I think he imagined that we were maybe bigger or richer in assets than maybe we were. However, we've now finished the Sleepy Hollow. You know, it's a $3 million investment. We've finished, well, not completely finished ASR, which. Is now probably a $12 million investment since the beginning. And things are going to start breaking. And just because like ASR, a lot of it gets captured in the O and M funding agreement with Calam, it gets reimbursed. There's going to be things that won't get reimbursed. Um, so we have to look at the building life and, uh, some tank life and things like that. So. We do need to get a little bit better now that we've got some assets. Um. That we care about. Uh. Unfortunately, we don't own pure water Monterey facilities. So, you know, you can only hope that. They're doing the same asset management on the new investment there. Um, but anyway, that's where it comes from is that. We needed to get a little more detailed in our capital. We do a capital improvement plan. It's typically a three-year. Um, but we need to start looking at, and so we've got John, for example, uh, with ASR, looking at well life and well replacement. And we've already heard Calam say, well, you know, I don't think well replacement is a, is a maintenance cost. That's a capital cost. And if that proves to be true, that's on our shoulders. So we better do some planning as to when we might need to do that and so forth. So that's what that's all about. I don't have any other near-term object, objectives that jumped out unless you're thinking of something we need to look at right now, like a. They have. Well, we actually haven't.
Through the chair, um, I was listening to the 152 committee. Mayor Peak brought up something that he would like us to put. Um, on the internet.
Uh.
On the web. You, you remember that discussion?
Yeah, well, the most basic is the budget.
Yes.
And it's supposed to be there. We've been foot dragging because.
Let's put it down so we can get it done.
Yeah.
Put it down for that near term.
Absolutely. And I, I don't know, Joelle was working on that a little bit. Did, did Suresh ever give it to Sarah to post?
I'm still working, uh, with staff and then I'll get the budget posted.
But I'll raise my hand and say, yes, it's embarrassing to not have your budget easily accessible under financial documents online.
Well, I'd like for you to put it down and put it within the next six months. So now the heat is on to get it done.
And I, I haven't read that yet. Why did Mayor Peak, um. What, ask for that?
He just brought it up to put the budget online and everybody else have it. So, you know, that way you can read through it.
Yeah.
Read through it.
And, and it definitely is a problem. Um, you know, we, you know, our, we haven't updated our website to kind of current standards. You've probably seen a couple of agencies. Completely revamped their websites in the last two to three years.
Yes.
We need to do so, but the other piece of it is. When we presented it at the June board meeting, the final budget. We all know that it's there. And so when we don't find it easily on the website, we just go to that meeting and we pull it up from, but, but somebody from the public. Should be able to go to the who we are, financial documents, and it should be there. And the reason has been like on the audit, if we haven't signed it, it's not ready to post. The budget, if it hasn't been signed and so forth. But there's no reason that you adopt one in June that it's not on there by January. So, and Suresh knows this, it's been. It's been an amusing. Piece of banter. Let's just.
Well. Please put down there within the next six months too, so the heat is really on.
I have a question under financial.
Yes.
Actually, why don't I say within one month of the.
Oh, now you put the, oh. That, 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 that put it in line.
That's. I think that's, that's. What more, more realistic current standard. Yeah.
And it needs to be the standard because the fact that Mayor Peak pulled it up. This time, i- it's happened every year for the last three years. And then we do, uh, a mid-year budget. And I've actually seen the mid-year budget get posted and the original budget still wasn't on the website. And that's just. It's on us. It's on us.
One of those things.
All right, needs, needs improvement. This is a needs improvement area.
It's a near, it's a near-term objective.
Right.
Okay, I've got a question.
Yep.
Yes.
Um. Where is, I don't know if it belongs here or not at all, but because it's been such, such a, a hot subject, and I think the, uh. Uh, 152 discussed it, um. uh, one fifty-two discussed it, um, where do we have, what critical things that we actually are doing with our water supply charge? Is that someplace that people can see that, so you?
Yeah, you'll see it in your board packet for next, uh, new, next week, the twenty-seventh.
Is there some place that, that should that be on our website, or should it be, I don't know? Cause I know it's one of those things that people refer to. It's time to, you know, cancel that out.
Do we do a nine ninety?
I thought that was for nonprofits.
It's for some, it's, uh, it's for some, but, you know, five oh ones. And I didn't know what it was that we are, whether it required our, our, us doing that, because that has so much of this information on it. But if Dave doesn't know it, then we, then we're, then we don't have to do it, I can see that.
Yeah, I don't think we do.
I hope we have enough staff to do all these things that we're putting on our to-do list.
And we've got an A, AB, AB there. Did you, uh, get an A B, A B instead of A B, C, D, where we just were?
Oh, where we just were?
Where we just were, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Fixable.
Double duty is a proofreader.
Very quick.
Yes.
Automatic.
Alright, I think that brings us to the last one, which is organizational efficiency and effectiveness.
Some of the things we were just discussing really relate to that.
Yeah, I've added cloning.
That'll go one day. Keep trying.
Yeah, so we're gonna have to come back with some sort of recommendation of the board over work. I'm hopeful that we reach, and it depends who you read and what you pay attention to, but, you know, if the Omicron is gonna become just the prevalent type, and there will be more mutations, you know, there's gonna be more mutations. But if we're heading to a point where COVID becomes kind of a background level, just like flus and colds and what have you, and we're back authorized to return to work, then the only thing here is it won't be about COVID nineteen, but as you've probably recognized, workers had a little taste of candy with working from home and flexible work schedules and so forth. And I don't think we can ignore that, the, the work paradigm is gonna shift a little bit, so we're gonna need to talk about what our model's gonna look like. And that, you know, we're gonna wait till the middle of the year and see where COVID is taking us. Otherwise, we'll just keep doing what we're doing. Um, we talked about this one earlier.
Yes.
Organizational efficiency, uh, one of our big drawbacks right now is public outreach, but we've already made that a new goal. I don't know if there's anything that you're seeing that you think we need to do better. You know, longer term, we're continuing to do this data migration. Uh, we've gone from primarily the HR-related public documents that all of our employees use internally, that's now in a database. We've got all the HR files in a database, but they're only accessible by certain confidential employees. So we've still got more work to do. We've got the platform set up and so forth, but it, it does come down to bodies and time. Um, so we'll see where that leads us, but we need to get more electronic. We do now have someone who's a contracts person, so there's gonna be some shift in, you know, Sarah has been filing the contracts and so forth. We're gonna make sure that it's a little more, uh, efficient, so our contracts person is on top of it more so than having to ask a administrative staff person to pull it and find it for you and so forth. So there are things happening, but not enough to rise to the level of a specific objective that I can think of. But if you have any, I'm willing to hear them.
Um, can we change? I mean, I don't know if post-COVID nineteen is the appropriate term to have in there more, cause there's not gonna be a post-COVID nineteen in my view, but just, uh, something like as the pandemic settles or something. I don't know what to say, it's.
Yeah.
To me, we could just say, you know, in light of COVID, or to manage COVID conditions.
You don't even know if you need to add anything other than discuss implementation of an employee hybrid, uh, work schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's it.
That works.
Yeah, and I think that's what it comes down to.
Yeah.
Boy, I tell you, when it was temporary, we didn't have to paper over it, but if we make it permanent, there are suggestions from HR people on, uh, it's like a six-page document on how you work from home. It's like, well, we've done it for twenty months, um, twenty-one now. I think we figured it out. Do I actually need a document where you fill in days and times? And so I think, I think where we're headed is discretion of the division manager to allow some work from home, but then, then all you really need is how do you monitor that? How do you monitor output? Um, in a perfect world, that's all you need. You know, we trust you, get your work done. Oh, look, I can measure your work, it's getting done, but, um.
Exactly.
Anyway, we'll come back. Uh, yeah, anything else, near term or long term? Then let's jump to this new one. Just so I'm hearing you, um, ignore whether they're near term or long term, um, but we need to up our game.
We need to make, well, so one thing is I think we need to make the public more aware of all the things the district has been doing and is currently doing. I mean, leaving aside Measure J activities, just, you know, the Carmel River mitigation and the conservation, the water supply, definitely. Um, you know, any, any, any resource planning, any um, anything related to regional solutions, we, we, we need to let the the public know the, the water management and resource management activities that we're doing.
Yep.
Yeah.
And, and we do some of, some of that, but I think we need to do more.
Yeah, and it's been tough too. You know, we ran, I think our end of the year, so it was December, branding ad was the, the achievements for the year. It was a nice little ad, but you know, the imprint, you know, the eyeballs that you get is limited and and it gets forgotten, but there are other ways to do it.
I got feedback from someone who's an educated person, who, there were a few items in that list that were not comprehensible to this late person anyway, so probably.
Yeah, probably, you know, drafting, I guess, just.
Yeah, I have to, it's hard to, all this tech, technical stuff, but we have to make it accessible.
I, I, I would like to see for near terms, send a budget on, on how much we're gonna spend on it. Because we've been talking about mailing something out to the public for, I don't know how long.
Yep.
Now, a- and, and I know that, um, they're gonna have to, whoever do it, gonna have to do it all, you know? So, I don't know how much staff can get involved with that, but hire somebody, hey, they do it, develop it, mail it.
It's also an opportunity to tell the public, what, what are we doing with your money? And what are we, what are we doing for the public?
Do you?
Yeah.
I have my hand raised for quite minutes.
I am sorry, please.
I, I just have, going back to the previous one, I have a compliment to make to staff of the water district. My daughter is a realtor and she had an emergency yesterday to, about a question pertaining to a, that's a potential sale. And she talked to a lady by the name of Tricia. And, and, and sent her an email, and Tricia immediately responded, immediately. And then I had a follow-up, I'm running to the aid of my daughter, and I called and Kyle answered. And he was so cooperative and would go out of his way. I don't think he knew who, that I'm involved on the board. I doubt it. And then I called again, and between him and Stephanie, Chris, Christer.
Christer, yeah.
They, they, they both had all the information that I needed to know. So, thank you, and please thank them on, on the public behalf for their immediate response to conversations that are so urgent, so whether they are remote or they are on the premises, the efficiency is there and the response is premium. Thank you.
So I've added this as a near term objective. Is that good?
Thank you.
So I, I do, I do have to tell you, what's interesting is, you know, for twenty years, we've had this reputation of being the water Nazis, right? And some of that comes from the in-home inspections and the counting of fixtures and so forth. Who are the same people as Tricia and Stephanie and so forth. But a lot of it is just, uh, it's identified as the district. The district's mean, the district's intrusive, it's just the district.
Yep.
And all of the compliments that we get are how good Stephanie is, and Stephanie Hister is, and Gabby, everyone loves Gabby, they used to love Debbie before she retired. Tricia, um, Kyle, so the same people who are implementing are not held responsible for the regulations they're implementing, because they are the ones that people say, oh, I love you, you guys are great. And so it's a very good, um, face of the district, but it's, it is kind of weird because they're out there enforcing things that people hate us for, but you know, if somebody's gonna bother me, you're really nice, so.
Yeah.
I don't hold you personally responsible, so. But thank you, Safwat, that's very nice, I'll, I'll relay that to the.
Please.
The team.
Did Gabby retire?
Oh, no.
No.
I think, I think we got her for at least three more years. She's on her thirty, thirtieth year.
She's the best.
Wow. They're, they're all pretty good.
One of the best.
Yeah, I think she's got the biggest cheerleading section.
Yep.
Um, I think a very good, uh, public outreach person can get both of those, uh, objectives of the staff, whether they're helping people like Safwat's daughter, or or making sure that they're looking over the water supply and making sure that we're keeping it safe. It's not being wasted, it's not being, you know, that that can be one of the same thing.
Yeah, and, and let, and let me tell you, the, the, the things I've thrown up here, what is our model? The, we need to have a discussion about, do we hire somebody internally, or do we remain outsourcing? Our, our options for outsourcing are getting smaller. Armin Aska is not really doing this kind of stuff anymore. Um, there's a woman named Ashley Benali who was doing it, and no one's heard or seen her in three years. Um, you know, we went through Steve Thomas, uh, TMD's undergoing this change, we're gonna meet the new owner, maybe in a week or two. Um, so we really need to discuss that model and who's doing our bidding, um, and how. And that'll affect budget too. So there's gonna be a lot there. These long-term objectives are, uh, you know, resolving email communications. We just got a, you know, MailChimp outreach piece today that included a link to a newsletter. I can't remember which organization, but you know, that's what we need to do.
Yeah.
You know, we need somebody to build the MailChimp email list and then clean it up on a regular basis, work with Sarah and her distribution list. So we have, we have work to do, and it's really at two levels, the basic outreach function, and then the supportive Measure J milestone, and that should be plural, because every time, you know, it's like Laughco. Well, you know, why was Cal AM running ads on broadcast TV? Just to, you know, affect the hearts and minds and, you know, a little bit of the politicians. You know, apart from George actually having meetings and me reaching out to have meetings, and I had some, you know, Marianne Luffel and Pete Poitras uh, Steve Snodgrass and others, but, you know, it wasn't comprehensive. We didn't, you know, we didn't have a touch each commissioner three times process in advance, and the same thing's gonna happen when you get to making an offer, well, leading up to the offer and so forth. We could just do better trying to let people know what we're doing and why, even though we're not asking them for anything other than the buzz, create the buzz, talk with each other, saying, yeah, you know, hey, you know, if the district decides to make an offer on Cal, well, heck, that's what we asked them to do three years ago, you know, so I'm fine with it, but now they're finally doing it, you know, so I think there's a lot to be done with each stage of the process. And I, and I do think that's what Director Malik was pointing to, you know, a month or so ago, when he said, we need a better PR for us.
Yes.
And it's not because, and it's not that TMD couldn't have done it, we just didn't define what it is we wanted to do.
Yes.
Uh, I'm curious about who, uh, COD is using.
Yeah.
They're good, those newsletters are really good.
Yeah, COD and PVCSD make good newsletters.
I just wonder who they're using.
Yeah, or whether it's internal.
Yeah, sure.
Aren't, aren't we going to activate the outreach committee and might this be a place where we can get into more details? I just see some things here that I kind of wanna say, but then I don't wanna say it because I don't really wanna see it in print yet, cause I don't know, but uh, you know, employee performance or something like that, uh, just social media in general. Um, you know, how regular or is it episodic? Uh, you know, those kind of things, I think, could be discussed with, with some detail going forward. Um, it's, it's, it's kind of a marketing question, it's more than just outreach, it's kind of telling our story. Uh, so, anyway, there's a lot of angles to this.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, uh, George, uh, that I think the committee, the, the public outreach committee would be a good place to start. You know, working on those questions, and do some work and then bring some proposals to the board. I mean, it's, it's very important, so we're all, you know, it's good that we're having good ideas about it, but there's, you know, in strategic planning, there's a limit to how, how deep we're gonna go in this kind of meeting, right?
Yeah, uh, you've actually, but you've gotten your, you know, fingers pretty deep into it by looking at objectives rather than goals. So I think, I think we're pretty much there. The words are gonna change a little bit as this comes back to you, but.
Yeah, we, we might wanna add a little bit to this, but, um.
Yeah. You know, I do have to tell you again, social media, you know what we do right now with our Twitter feed and, uh, Facebook? Uh, it's if some staff member says, hey, this was cool and this happened, and then the, the other staff member says, oh, let me post that. You know, the one really great thing we had from Steve Thomas that we haven't had with TMD um, is attending our meetings and learning what the district does and and looking and, and finding opportunities to promote something that we've done. And, you know, we need to get better at that, because that would mean, you know, even if it's every two weeks, um, hey, we need to get something new on the Facebook or on the, uh, Instagram, or, you know, whatever it is. Instagram or, you know, whatever it is we're doing at the time.
And raising our profile that way, you know, I think it could be so many ripple effects from that besides. You know, public confidence, public support for what we're trying to do, we could attract more good people who want to work for the district. And get journalists better informed. Let's see, other thing. Uh, it slipped my mind, but there's a lot of, yeah, recruitment, you know, for recruitment. It would, you know, we, we will at various times need to recruit people and it's not that easy here, right? In this area, so, uh, yeah, people who having a a good reputation of doing good work and interesting work is, could be a good draw.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm confident we made a lot of progress. I had intended to bring in. One of those easels with the white paper. You know, I could write it up here and then maybe put dots on it.
A parking lot for good ideas that belongs somewhere else?
Yes, let's put that one in the parking lot, that's a parking lot issue.
I still have the white pages.
You did good, uh, Dave.
Yeah, yeah.
But, well, you guys came prepared to talk about things that are close to you and, um, you know, I think that's, that's the important thing. So I think we're there. Next steps is I will try to draft this up into a format similar to what we saw. For adoption last year, uh, give it first to. Uh, Chair and Vice Chair to see if they've got, uh, edits and then out to the group to see if there's additional edits or anything. And then it'll be in a, uh. Staff note for board adoption in February if we're ready.
Super.
Okay.
Wonderful. Dave, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well.
Hey, thank you, Dave. Have a good weekend. Care to get a little rest?
All right.
Good discussion.
Yeah.
All right, everybody. Thanks for your time.
Before we wrap it up, do you want to take it out to the public?
Oh.
Yeah, I guess.
We're in the meeting.
I apologize. Just as a, as a reminder, um, if you would like to make public comment on this matter, please raise your hand or if you're calling in, push star nine. Let's go ahead and give it a couple of seconds here.
Looks like there might be one.
The number ending in seven five four, uh, asks you to unmute. And you'll need to push star six on your end.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. It's John Tilly. Um, interesting discussion, fascinating. I'd just like to remind the district that a few years ago it did sign the water supply, uh, project agreement. Uh, several of you were signers on that and, you know, some of the headwinds you're getting now are due to the, um, reneging on that agreement. Um, and expectation was set in the community that certain things were going to happen and then, uh, there was a change in the board and. The, um, previous board's determinations along with a lot of other work that had been done, was just cast aside to pursue measure J instead. And I think that this discussion today just points out how many resources of the water district that should be going to things like water supply are instead going to measure J. We're talking about hiring people, multiple people, a COO, a public outreach person. Those costs should be, by the way, remunerated into the measure J cost in general. I heard the mayor say that there's hundreds of units that could be happening in Monterey, but there's not water to do it. And that's a fact. That is just a fact that the, uh, housing has come into a complete halt around here due to the proceedings of. Of not proceeding with water supply project instead pursuing measure J. And as well as the revenues of the district, that the water supply charge is going to continue to be, uh, collected, that the reserves that should be used for capital projects are instead going to be subverted to measure J. Uh, through legal opinions and, um, just really. How deeply the pursuit of measure J is shading the work of the district away from. Uh, water supply to legalistic public outreach, non-water supply issues. Thank you very much for letting me comment.
I will just note that water supply is number one on our. Goal of our goals.
Yeah, on the housing issue, by the way, um. You know, specifically talking to Monterey, which has been the primary, uh, driver of a lot of this. So has the, there's a coalition that includes Delray Oaks and Seaside and others, so we're working, you know, pretty much across all the patterns. There is water available for housing on Garden Road. The ability to serve. And not violate the seaside, uh, adjudication or the cease and desist order. Is out there except for condition two of the cease and desist order, which says. No increase in use due to, due to a change in zoning or use. Well, Garden Road was rezoned. To go from commercial to include housing. Mayor Ken Tin Canery was rezoned, so they fall into this level of scrutiny where you have to enforce condition two, but condition, condition two says. No increase in use on an existing service connection. Due to this change in zoning or change in use. So going from commercial to residential also is a change in use. So you got them both. You got change in zoning or change in use saying, hey, look at this line of text in the CDO. But the, but condition two also says. That they don't want to see more diversions from the river to serve these increased uses. Well, the fact is, once you agree to live within your water right, which the companies agreed to, we've agreed to. Everybody's pretty much said, we're living within our means now at this point. We're not asking. For relief from that, an increased incremental water, it's within the water that we legally have rights to. We want to be able to have an increase in use so we can build housing. Well, whether. You're not taking it from the river or not. Their read of condition two is it's an increase in use, so therefore we must scrutinize and therefore there's the potential for enforcement. And so what you're telling a developer at the front end is make an investment, but there's potential for enforcement. The day after you complete it in two and a half years. And so all this is about is trying to get rid of the risk of enforcement by having the state water board say. All right, we recognize you're living within your means. We won't, you know, as long as it's affordable housing, we won't read those words and look to enforce. And that would be so easy because there is water to do the housing. So it's, you know, water for the Rena goals going out. Two years, three years, four years, five years? No, that's why we need a permanent water supply. Um, but there will be plenty of water coming from the expansion, um, that CalM won't be able to use for years. So I just want to clarify that the current constraint is not water, you know, twenty acre feet can do a lot of housing. And that would not affect the regulatory setting right now.
Just through the chair, is it, um, is it accurate, uh, Dave, to say that, uh, the district is fighting that issue at the state level with the State Water Resource Control Board? Without the help of CalM? CalM is actually not an advocate like we are?
Yeah, we'd like to bring them along, but their first reaction to our proposals, we we filed in March, um, you know, an actual application for relief. Under the state water code. And CalM's letter said, well, it's not clear what they're asking, meaning they didn't really read. Very well, or call us to say, what it, what does it mean? Um, but we don't support it because it it just puts us further at risk. And, you know, honestly, yeah, it does. You know, if you let ten acre feet back. Twenty acre feet back into the system. Well, yeah, of course, but, you know, Mission Lennon just went out of business four years ago. It ebbs and flows, you know, there, there's stuff that goes offline and you're trying to bring new stuff online. Yeah, it balances itself out. But if you've got a buffer, which we still do. Then you ought to be able to repurpose ten acre feet and do some development. And it's not going to affect anything, but yeah, it, you, yes, we are at the state level trying to make it work. Just last week or two weeks ago, we put into the hands of Kate Daniels on behalf of John Laird. A follow-up letter asking for a workshop. Reiterating. The basics of this, that we're not asking for more water, we're just asking for selective non-enforcement, so a developer can commit money. And frankly, these projects won't get done before Pure Water Monterey Expansion comes online unless. You know, some other party blows up the water purchase agreement application at the PUC, which. You know, the three most effective parties, Monterey One, CalM and ourselves have all agreed to sign it if the PUC approves. So hopefully nobody's trying to undermine that process. So if we get through unscathed, you know, five months from now. You sign that water purchase agreement, you release the bid documents. And you start building and twenty months later, you're done, so two and a half years. You really think major multifamily housing developments are going to get. Designed and completed in two and a half years? And maybe they will, but at least if you've committed to and you've broken ground on a permanent water supply. Well, then you've got additional leverage, which is. We don't think they're going to come online before the expansion comes online, but if they did. You know, we've got a project. You can see it. Let me drive you out there, you know, I mean, it it becomes real at that point that. It's no longer a matter of if you'll get water supply, it's when do you flip the switch? And that changes the conversation as well, but.
Yeah.
You know, these poor jurisdictions are sitting here going. I've gotten the message. I want to build housing. I've got some projects. Let's go. And, uh, I think Hans Isler's, um, conversation with Housing Community Development last week is. A positive because I think they expected him to come in and complain about the Rena numbers. And that's not what he came in and talked about. He came in and said. We recognize the Rena numbers. That's a conversation for another day, but let us make a dent on them. Now, don't keep us waiting and it's. Those guys over at the state water board who are undermining your ability to get your goals at Housing Community Development. So we'll see. We're water guys, you know, I mean, we've, we've kind of stretched our wings about as far as we can go on the housing issue. And we need the housing advocates to turn up the heat.
Maybe they will.
Thank you. I think, Chair.
Thank you all. Oh, thank you, Dave. Thank you all for your participation and I adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Go Niners.